Buddy and welcome, or good afternoon and welcome to the annual organizational meeting of the Boston School Committee. I hope everyone had a happy new year. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you. I'm glad everyone's here. This is the annual organizational meeting of the school committee, done by school committees across the state, as is also done by city councils and boards of selectmen, et cetera, with two purposes, to approve the calendar and to elect leadership for the following year, and then we'll resume our normal business practice at our next meeting, which will be on January 10th. I'd like to begin by congratulating Dr. Coleman and Mr. LaCanto, who were both reappointed by four-year terms by Mayor Walsh earlier today. So, the committee is extremely fortunate to benefit from both of your experience, and we're delighted that you signed up for another four years. I want to remind folks in general of the process of what it means to be a school committee member, so, because a lot of folks don't actually know. We are all appointed by the mayor, but first, every single one of us have applied to a citizens advisory panel, which consists of sixteen people, set up by law, that consists of parents, representatives from apparent organizations, teacher organizations, special ed, higher ed, the business community, some citizens at large, across the city. They serve very admirably in that role, and when people apply, there tends to be a fairly large number of people apply for each open position. You have to go and be interviewed by the citizens advisory panel, and a fairly rigorous process that we have all undergone, whether it is your first time applying, or whether you're applying to stay on the committee. And so, both Mr. LaCanto and Dean Coleman reapplied for their position this year, went through the citizens advisory panel, who then typically recommends three to five people for each position to the sitting mayor at the time, in this case, Mayor Walsh. The sitting mayor can only choose from that list of individuals that is recommended by the citizens advisory panel. So, it is a fairly rigorous process, and Superintendent Chang and I happened to be in City Hall one day meeting, and both Dean Coleman and Mr. LaCanto were going in for their interviews, along with other folks who were interviewing and who were interested in the position. So, it is an interesting process to go through, and thank you both for doing it, and we're delighted, on behalf of my fellow members, to have you still be on the committee. We'll move on now to the first item on our agenda, the approval of the 2018 meeting calendar. My fellow members, each of you have a copy of the calendar in front of you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the calendar as presented, recognizing that at times, we may need to have to make changes to accommodate special needs or circumstances as they arise. I believe the calendar is attached in our packet, and it does also include the suggested three budget hearings that we would be holding as well. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Still moved.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Is there any discussion to the motion? Yes, Dr. Uriarte.
Yeah, I'm, again, I mean, I'm a little concerned that even though we have now the list of the, we have the meeting schedule, we still don't know what exactly will be treated at each one of these meetings. So, I wanted to, again, reiterate the fact that that is an important piece of what needs to happen, because this is a public body. We should be able to, people should be able to know ahead of time, and we should be able to know ahead of time what we're going to be discussing. So, I know that this may not be the specific thing we're voting upon today, but I don't want to let go of this moment to, you know, and not bring up that this is something that's like a gaping hole in our process. I was wondering whether we could get some understanding about what it would take to actually do that.
Well, I think that's a very interesting question. This is merely just the dates of the meetings, and what you were suggesting is the agenda items. And in planning the agenda, speaking from experience here, we do tend to always try to have two to three presentations per meeting. Some things are mandated by the calendar, so, when the budget is presented to us, the first Wednesday in February, when the budget is voted on, the fourth Wednesday in March, when SPEDPAC presents to us, when each of the task force present to us. So, there are a number of things that are pretty much set in stone, the superintendent's evaluation. Then, beyond that, there are issues that, it was my practice as chair, to try to reach out to members a couple of times a year to say, "What items would you like to see?" And then, in many cases, we would consolidate them, because some folks would bring up some issues that may be similar, and we'd try to consolidate them, working with the superintendent and his team, and try to lay that out. Sometimes, we were good at that. Sometimes, we weren't, Dr. Uriarte, plain and simple, and that is 100% my responsibility. I did try to, a number of times, with working with Vice Chair Coleman, of course, then reach out to members and say, "Here's what it looks like for the next half of this year." But it was not a practice that was always followed 100%, because, quite frankly, circumstances change as well. And some things come up at the last minute that needed to be added on, and many times, get a call from the superintendent and would say, "Could we add this to the next meeting or to the meeting after that?"
Or take this out.
Right. Or conversely, "Our team isn't ready for this. Could we push it off?" So, it is something that is fluid. The agenda is a matter of the chair, set by the chair, as set by our statue. I always worked in concert with Dean Coleman on it, and would encourage that whomever is the next chair, that they follow a practice to try to get input from members, and give feedback to them as much as possible, and, quite frankly, to the public about when to accept items. So, I think that's feedback you have raised, and I would encourage you to continue to raise it.
Now that you were, no, but again, it's something that comes up periodically, and I think a lot of us are really trying to, you know, just make the point that this is a public body. We should be able, it should be transparent in that way, and that we should know what's coming up. If you ask some of us, I won't look at who, she's saying, you know, three weeks ahead of time, four weeks ahead of time. No, just so that we know, and we get our material.
Speaking from experience, I think it could certainly be aimed for twice a year, for the chair to give-
That would be fine.
...guidance to members of, "Here's what we anticipate in the fall session. Here's what we anticipate in the spring session."
That would be, that would be good. Thank you.
And understanding why.
Ms. Robinson.
Yeah, I was going to say, the other issue is not just getting the agenda, but really understanding why whatever is on the agenda is there, and what the expected outcomes are. Because sometimes, I think, we read the agendas, and we're not quite sure why things are coming before us when they come, but it would be good just to have a context so that we can do our best work.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Dean Coleman?
Yeah, so, and trying to understand that. So, is part of the request saying, and this is something we may do collectively, saying, "What are the common information we want this report? Here are the five, six reports that we're expecting, and we would want them by, and we want the information for that information by," and that's something we can start thinking about in advance, ahead of time, and kind of driving it a little more, take some of the pressure off the chair to kind of feel that they're, just working the district to create it. I think what I'm hearing is we should do some more work.
I think it would be great if we could figure out, for example, if we're going to do student assignment. I mean, what is it that we need? This is the first time, the second time, the third, do you know what I mean to that?
I think it should, I think part of this is then coming for us to then individually look back over the issues and say, tell the chair what we would like to have going forward, and not just, we can assert our ideas on that. We can assert our ideas. We can say, "We would like, these are the things I would want on the agenda. When could we have it?" And we can start asserting in advance. So, the one we often go around, wondering, and they get the equity analysis of the school assignment, we want it, when it's going to be, we want that, work with the district about when we would have it.
But the fact is that there are some things that are set. I think Michael, you know, Mr. O'Neill, mentioned some of them, but there are others that the superintendent brings in, the buildings, you know, just, you know, the kinds of things that we know are going to happen, should be very clear right away, and then, you know, negotiate the rest with six, every six months. That would be good. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Uriarte. Any other questions or comments on the motion?
I would just-
Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you. Sorry, Chair. I would just like to ditto that, and like in any organization, there's always a skeleton of the year, and you might not always follow it, but at least you know, and you can move things around. But I think visually, it would be great for all of us to know and understand, and also, obviously, the public. So, I would really appreciate that. And not to add more meetings, but I know we had a retreat last year. I was hoping that we would come out with something more solid. We came out with some things, but I think we should, I would suggest doing that again.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Any other questions or comments? There are none. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Regina Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Uriarte?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. D'Onil?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The calendar is approved, and I appreciate the comments from members for how things could, there could be more clarity in the future. We're going to move on now to the election of officers. Before we do, I would like to call chairman's prerogative for one brief moment. And I did send each of you a letter this past year, this past week, and in the interest of transparency, I would like to read it publicly, so the public knows what I said to each of the members. And it was, "My fellow members, I hope you are enjoying some precious time with family and friends during this holiday season. It's a time that many of us take to reflect what we're thankful for and what we plan for the new year in front of us. As I reflect, I thank each of you for the incredible honor to serve as your chairperson in the Boston School Committee for the last five years. As a graduate of this district, and as someone who is deeply, deeply committed to improving the educational opportunities for all the 57,000 students in Arkea, I value our work together in always striving to reach this singular goal. I believe that in the close to ten years I have served in the Boston School Committee, we have made great strides towards that goal. We have increased inclusive opportunities for our most vulnerable students. We've improved how we teach our students for whom English is a second language. We have adjusted the assignment process, and we have set an opportunity and achievement gap policy with the necessary steps to ensure implementation and improvement. We continued positive academic improvement during transitions in city and district leadership, and set a new national standard for community involvement in a superintendent search. We have done this and much more in a difficult fiscal environment, with federal and state resources continuing to decline year after year. However, due to our close relationship with the city of Boston and strong committed leadership from Mayor Walsh, we have seen the city continue to increase the total funding available for our efforts each year, as we work to improve both the buildings our students learn in, and the classroom experience that allow our students to thrive. Equally important to me, as you all know, we have done this work in a transparent and open manner, while respecting and growing the input of our students, teachers, employees, parents, and educational partners. We can't do this work alone, and with the growth of BSAC, the Citywide Parents Council, SPEDPAC, and our partnership efforts with the BTU and our other collective bargaining units, and numerous funders and partners reflect the commitment we all hold. Each year, I remind this body, the chair is simply the servant of the body, and I have always aimed to reflect your will and desire. I have been humbled that you have all chosen to elect me chair for five years. Along with Dean Coleman as vice chair, we have worked hard to both lead and serve in our roles, as the committee membership has evolved over the years. As we are all volunteers in our position, we are all always equally juggling our full-time job commitments and family commitments. This work as chair requires considerable sacrifices in both of those areas, which I have done willingly. Now, however, as members have gained more experience, it is time for me to honor a commitment I made to my family this past summer, namely, to let each of you know that I believe the time is right for evolution in the chair position. Our body always strives to improve, and rotation in leadership is important in that effort. As such, I will not stand for election in this leadership position when we next meet. It has been a privilege to lead this body on your behalf. We do not do this work alone. First, I thank each of you. Most do not realize the dedication and hard work you all give. I thank Dr. Coleman, who has been a steadfast source of support, advice, and guidance, as was my immediate predecessor, Reverend Hoover. I thank the three superintendents I have worked closely with, Dr. Johnson, Mr. McDonough, and Dr. Chang, and their respective senior leadership teams. Each have been and will continue to be incredible leaders and thought partners, in particular, Dr. Chang. You are serving this district well, and I look forward to continuing to advise and support your work in Boston in the coming years. I also thank the two mires I work so closely with, the late Mayor Manino and Mayor Martin Walsh. Both have been deeply supportive of our youth, our schools, and our district, both in words and action. It has been their push for continued improvement for our district that drives our work, and their belief in appointing us to our seats that puts us in a position to drive positive improvement for the youth in Arkea. As with Dr. Chang, I look forward to continuing to advise and support Mayor Walsh's educational leadership in the coming years as well. I also thank Elizabeth Sullivan, our executive secretary, and those who have worked in the Boston School Committee office. Simply put, we cannot do the work we do without their hard work and dedication to our students in the district. Lastly, I thank my wonderful wife, Rana, and my three understanding stepchildren, who have also graciously shared a considerable amount of my time and attention with the district over these past five years. We each understand former President Theodore Roosevelt's quote about the man in the arena from 1910, when he said, and I quote, "The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose blood, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who ears, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does, but who does actually strive to do the deeds." We are that person in the arena. We are striving valiantly, day after day, to do right for the youth in Arkea. I will continue to strive with each of you, and I look forward to continuing that work as your fellow member in the coming new year. Sincerely, Mike Cloniel. Thank you. That's very kind of all of you. So, thank you for indulging me that moment, and sorry, this call that is coming on is getting to me. So, we'll move on now to election of offices for 2018.
Don't we get to say something?
No, we don't.
Wait, 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 wait.
Could we take committee members prerogatives?
I'm out.
And let you have a moment of silence so we can speak.
That's why I've been sent here with something to say.
Thank you, sir. Chairman O'Neill, you have been such a great leader for us all, and I had to write down the words, "Dust, Sweat, and Blood," because you do look dusty, sweaty, and bloody, from such a great journey that you've had as a leader. And I firmly believe, as a kid, I was always taught that everything rises and falls on leadership. And we have been able to rise to great heights under your leadership, under Dr. Chang's leadership, specifically, in some of the things that you mentioned there. But I have to really count you as a great leader in leaving your mark and leaving your legacy in two specific areas that are pretty near and dear to me. Number one, seeing how you stood firm, and how you spoke clearly and respectfully to the two young ladies who spoke up regarding Black Lives Matter, and to see your effort, your leadership, because that was a place that was near and dear to your heart, and you knew the tension that had been coming and came with what took place at BLS, and yet, you still stood firm as a leader, knowing that it was the right thing to do, to allow the students to have their voices heard. And I, as a woman, as a black woman, I appreciate when someone who does not look like me, and someone who does not share my experience, speaks up on behalf of me and of those who I represent. And so, I first want to say thank you for that. Also, just your leadership, continuing to ask principal after principal, leader after leader, about BSAC, about SPEDPAC, about the representation on their team, to hold leaders accountable. I also really, really honor you for your civility, for your respect, for the excellence and the empathy that you shared, that you exhibited, and that you led well with. So, I want to say just thank you for being a leader among leaders, and I look forward to seeing your journey moving forward.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Is that it? Ms. Oliver Davila.
All right. So, just to echo what Ms. Robinson said, thank you for remaining solid in the support that you gave towards BSAC, and the support that you gave me over the last year and a half since I've joined the school committee, and making sure that I have everything I need to engage in conversation or be prepared for meetings, or even just when you ask headmasters, "Do you have your representatives on BSAC?" And holding them accountable again. And I do look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Mr. McClain.
And also, thank you for your support around my college admissions. Yes, you introduced me to one of the members at Morehouse, and one of the chairmans of the School Board for Atlanta.
Yep.
And you also introduced me to some people along with the POSIA organization. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McClain.
I want to say thank you for being Russell Crowe in the arena, and I'm one of the scared people coming out to face the lions, and you actually defend me. And, no, but seriously, I do want to say that it is, that quote means a lot to me, and thank you for sharing that. And I've known you for many years. We sit on another board together, and even before coming on the school committee, I appreciated how open you are, and I hope, you know, whoever the next chair, chairs, et cetera, one of the things that I admire the most about you is the fact that you are open to listening to everyone's opinions. And I have seen that over and over again, in public, you know, at other meetings, and that's a big deal. Many people are afraid of differing points of view, and I think you do it so respectfully and so sincerely, and just the passion that you have brought around young people, especially some of our most disenfranchised young people in alternative education programming, and the champion that you are. I just really appreciate that. And I have a million examples of your reaching out at different times to the Latino community, when we were going through all this Trump craziness, and bringing people together to talk about fears, and how the school department is working around that, including community-based organizations in our conversation. So, I just want to say thank you for all of your years of work, both here and in the community, and I will really miss you being the chair, but I know we sometimes need to evolve and move on. So, I just want to thank you, and I thank you, the same as Keon, in the last two years, that you've always checked in with me to make sure that I'm okay, to make sure that I understand. And I know I've asked a lot of silly questions, and a lot, a lot of questions, and you were always really, really, really patient, and you've brought all of that historical, you know, memory of this body. And I don't think there's enough words to just say thank you for our, I don't even know if people know how much you put into this, and all the hours that you put in. I know you're thanking your wife and kids is really true, because it really is a lot of time. So, thank you so much for all you do for the city. I know you're not leaving, but thank you, thank you.
Thank you to each of you. I appreciate that. This is making-
Huh?
I'm not leaving very long.
In thinking about, in thinking about today, I was thinking, when was the last time, the first time that I met Michael? And it was the first time that we made a presentation on the research that we were doing on English-language learners in the old building, and we were coming to the school committee with very bad news, very bad news, which then evolved into other bad news on the road. But of all the people in the school committee, the one that I knew was listening and that asked us questions about what we were presenting was Michael. I had never met him before, and both with Santan and I were trying to be as polite as we could, as we gave these bad news. But I could, you know, I kept looking at Michael, even though I didn't know him, because he was following every word that we were saying. And I think that is, you know, a lot of, a lot of people pick up on your ability to really connect, even to people when you're trying to do very difficult things, or say very difficult things, that you connect to people, and you allow them the space to say what they need to say. The second time that, you know, came to my mind was when I came on to the school committee, and we met in this little office, dark little office, and I said, "Oh, my God." But- and we met in this little office, dark little office, and I said, "Oh, my God," but he was saying, "This is how you have to behave," and of course, you know, as my mother, I'm very hard.
Where do I remember that meeting?
I'm very hard to get told how to behave, and sure enough, you know, we had our conversation about what, how we were doing with this and that, but from that moment on, I've come to him with very difficult things. The, I mean, I wasn't on the school committee for a month, and we were having an executive session on issues related to English language learners that were, say, if Jamie wasn't here, I would, I would speak more about the moment. But we knew that it was a serious issue, and this was, what, a month into being here? And he trusted me, he trusted me to really go through that process and try to fix it, try to do what needed to get done to fix it. And I think, you know, as, you know, I know I have not been the easiest person in this, in this committee, but I've always felt that if there was truth in what I was saying, that Michael would support me and Michael would hear it, and I'm going to miss that a lot. I mean, you're going to be here, so I'm still going to call you, but, but, you know, afterwards, people don't know, I usually send them, when I have a question, I usually send them a long list, "This is what I'm worried about," and it's really, I think, that has been very helpful to me to learn how to, how to speak in a public body like this, coming from the academy where people just sort of blur things out, you know, almost unparalleled fashion. You know, I've learned a lot from you, and I thank you. I think, you know, I still have a lot to learn, as you know, but it's been, I think the trust that you've had in me when things were really serious, that I've really appreciated. So, I thank you very much for your leadership and your support.
Thank you, Dr. Uriarte.
I join everyone in just saying thank you. When I think of you, I think of how you lead, and the words come to me, is focus, grace, and humility. And many, many times, not only sitting here, but as we've gone out and being in other venues to have meetings about budget and other things, one of the things we can always count on you is to be, as everyone has said, an incredible listener, incredibly respectful, even when it's difficult, and really helping everyone to feel that they're being heard and understood, whether you agree or not agree, but the issue is, we can't always agree, but we can always be respectful. And I really appreciate that in you, and I hope that that is something that's rubbed off on the rest of us and that we will carry as we continue forth on this work, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
It's hard to follow my fellow members, but I did want to note one thing. I think everyone in this room knows that you are a son of Jamaica Plain, that you went to the Joseph P. Manning School, that you went to Boston Latin, and I noted all that because we know that BPS runs in your blood, and, you know, I think it comes through to all of us, you know, certainly the members of this body, but the folks that work in our schools, the folks that work in central office, the people that come to these meetings that run through our hallways every day, they know that you're here for this district and the best interests of its students, and that's a hell of a thing to live up to for the rest of us. It's a great thing to follow, and I've been continually impressed over the time that we've worked together. You've taken, I think you've heard from every one of us, but I'll join it as well, you've taken each one of us under your wing at some point and shown us the ropes and helped us understand what the district's all about, what it means to comport yourself as a, as a member, as a public servant, and we owe you a great debt of gratitude for that. You're a servant of this body, but you're also a servant of this district, and we can't thank you enough for that work.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto.
Being an academic, we have to give you a book, right? So, I'm going to ask my fellow members to sign this out there, but, dear Michael, Grant is one of the great servant leaders that have served to make this country one of the great promise, one of great promise for us all. Fulfilling this promise demands thoughtful, engaged, and principled people like you and Grant to give themselves to civil society responsibilities. Thank you for your service for the children of Boston.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. Yes, if you may.
Well, Michael, first of all, thank, I know you're uncomfortable right now, but suck it up, suck it up. First of all, I want to thank you for bringing me to Boston. It was a very long courtship, and that very long courtship has developed into a very long friendship, and the relationship between a superintendent and a board chair or a board president is critical, and I think you know this, but I've never told you this, when we go to national convenings, we're one of the few places, few cities, where the superintendent and the chairperson is standing side by side, and you actually don't see that very often. And so, I have appreciated your guidance and your friendship, and my last thing I just want to say, I think, especially now more than ever before, we need leadership in our country, in our city, that brings people together around solutions. Been saying this a lot, I've been stealing this from somebody else, but bring people together around solutions and not divide people around issues, because it's really easy to divide people around problems. It's much harder bringing people together around solutions, and your mannerism, the way you really invest in process is exactly that, bringing people around solutions. So, thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Okay, you have all made this Irish kid from JP extremely uncomfortable, so it is like being at your own wake, but I do thank the members sincerely for their comments. I have always said, we are better than the eight of us together, and Ms. Sullivan, the nine of us, because we work so closely together. What I've always learned from this body is we all bring different strengths, and we all bring different experiences, and we all bring different backgrounds to this, but we're all here singularly committed to the 57,000 students in our care. So, I have learned in my time in the committee, and particularly in my time in this chair, that if it's an ELL issue, I am going to talk to Dr. Uriarte and learn from her, or if it's about our newly arriving immigrants, or if it's about academic research, or if it's early education, I'm going to talk to Ms. Robinson, and, you know, I can go, each of us bring our strengths to the table, community organizations, inclusion, the student voice, the academic research world, the voice of parents. We have such a collection of people here, Ms. Robinson and I are both the two graduates of the district that are here, and so we have graduates here, we have parents here, we have folks in the academic world, the business world, the community, the community world, but we all come focused on the 57,000 students in our care, and as long as we keep that focus, everything else is irrelevant, and we all learn from each other, but we're all also, also open to learning from the community. So, it is important, even if we have to sit here for four hours sometimes, to hear the folks who want to come and talk to us, because we do learn from them, and sometimes we get kidded by the press about the length of our meetings and whether the lights go out or not. I was a little surprised it was not noted in the press that our last meeting, we gavelled shut at 1:03 a.m. That was, broke a record, yes, but that was because folks were here to talk to us and share with us, and you know what? We're a body that wants people engaged in our schools, so that's a good thing, right? That we, that's how we learn, and that's how the senior team learns as well, and so engagement is a good thing. If people are passionate and committed, this school district is going to continue to grow and thrive, and I have no doubt that under Build BPS, as we spend a billion dollars in our schools, our enrollment is going to climb. People are coming into this city, they want to be in our district, they, and we're going to, nothing but good things in front for Boston Public Schools. So, I thank everyone for their very fine comments. It has been a delight to serve as chair. It is time to rotate it around, and so with that, if there are no further comments, we move on to the next agenda item. Thank you. We'll move on to the election of offices for 2018, starting with the chairperson. At this time, I'd like to issue a call for nominations for chairperson.
I would like to make a nomination, Chair, and I would like to nominate Mr. LaCanto for chair, for our next chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Dean Coleman, okay. Are there any more nominations for the position of chairperson? Hearing none, I'll close out the nominations for chairperson. Is there a motion to close out the nominations for chairperson? Ms. Robinson, thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion to close out nominations for chairperson? Thank you, Ms. Robinson, Dean Robinson. Any discussion to the motion? Any objection to approving the motion to close out the nominations by unanimous consent?
Whoa, 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 discussion to the motion?
The motion to close out the nominations. So, first, this is not a vote for chair, this is, we are asking whether there are any more nominations for chair, or if there were none, there has now been a motion made to close out nominations for chairperson, and there has now been a second on that. Is there a discussion to the motion to close out nominations? Hearing none, is there any objection to approving the motion to close out nominations by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the nominations for chairperson are closed, so at this time, there has been a motion to, entertain a motion to elect Michael LaCanto as chairperson? Is there a motion?
Yes. I make a motion that we elect Michael LaCanto for the next chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan? Oh, yes.
Yes, that's why, so, I think it's important that we take this time after honoring your great leadership to think about what we're looking forward next and why. I think there's clearly a broad consensus to why we think you are the outstanding person to lead us forward, and I think it's something that I think people need to hear, is that this is a very difficult role. It demands someone who has a sensitivity to, I think, the wide political, in the best sense of the word, nature of the school committee in Boston, someone who we have trust, will honor the open records law, will work with us one-on-one and collectively to build consensus as the superintendent suggests of around very difficult issues, finding common solutions we can live with, and my understanding, conversations with our colleagues, we have great faith in your ability to work with us and as a, as our representative and facilitate us through very difficult times and discussions, and so that is one of the reasons why I was very excited when I learned about your interest in becoming chair, that this was just a great logical opportunity, because we know you'll put the heart and the time and the soul into the job, so look forward to working with you in the role.
Thank you. Thank you, Dean Robinson. Any other questions or any other comments on the motion?
When did I become a black girl? Dean Coleman.
Okay, I apologize. Dean Coleman.
I've always aspired.
Hundred twenty-five meetings, never made a mistake. I've finally made one. Thank you, Dean Coleman. Any other comments? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Regina Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Uriarte?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Congratulations, Chairman LaCanto.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we're gonna, I'm gonna give you a chance to give a few moments, in a few moments, if you'd like to say something, but first we'll do the second election.
Thank you.
That's okay, thank you. So, we'll move on to the position of vice chair. At this time, I'd like to issue a call for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Dr. Coleman.
Thank you. So, there was a nomination for Dean Coleman. Is there a second?
Mr. Sticken.
Ms. Robinson, thank you. Are there any more nominations for the position of vice chair? Hearing none, I would like to close out the nominations for vice chair. Is there a motion to close out the nominations for vice chair?
So moved.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Any discussion to the motion? Any objection to approving the motion to close out the nominations by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the nominations of a vice chair are now closed, so at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to elect Dean Coleman as vice chair. That's his wife calling, saying, "No, don't do it."
You think Gail's watching it for once?
Is there a motion to elect Dean Coleman as vice chair?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Any discussion to that motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Regina Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Uriarte?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Congratulations, vice chairperson.
Congratulations, thank you. So, at this time, I would like to offer, Chair LaCanto, would you like to say a few remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I don't know, I don't know how else to address you, because it's been about four years since I addressed you as anything else, but we'll figure out a way. I want to be brief today. I, you know, this is a celebratory day, and first of all, you know, I'm so glad we had such a great opportunity to celebrate your service for the committee, and it felt about halfway through, like it was getting towards the eulogy zone, but nevertheless, you will be back here next Wednesday and joining us for the foreseeable future, so we can't wait to have you back. I want to just start by saying thank you to Mayor Walsh, who earlier today reappointed both Dr. Coleman and I to the committee. I want to remark first that, you know, Mayor Walsh's commitment to this city and this district are an inspiration to me and a model for public service. This committee shares his vision for the Boston Public Schools as a place that provides sterling educational opportunities for all students, and we look forward to working with Mayor Walsh's administration and continuing to close opportunity and achievement gaps, and to make the Boston Public Schools the first choice for parents in this city. I'd also like to thank those that have come before me in this role, including Reverend Grover, who I had the pleasure of serving with in my first year on the committee, as well as Kevin McCloskey, who I had the pleasure of working with in a past role and who himself served as a committee chair in the 1980s. Both men have been kind enough to share counsel and guidance with me over my time on the committee, as have past members, Alfreda Harris, Marcel Gaynor, Meg Campbell, and Margaret McKenna. This is a volunteer role, as you all know, and you've, as you've heard today, and it's steeped in history, both good and bad, and that provides committee members with a unique perspective as we perform our solemn duty to guide this system of 56,000 students, 128 schools and school leaders, teachers and staff towards higher achievement. And most of all, you know, when I think about my fellow members, we've already said so much about them, but I really do want to take just a moment again to say thanks to Mr. O'Neill, who, again, has been an extraordinary man to learn from in my four years on the committee. Michael's been a constant on this board over a period of great change, as you all know. We've been through two mayors and three superintendents during that time, and, you know, from the, from the moving on of Mayor Manino to the service of the great John McDonough and our hiring process that resulted in the great Dr. Chang that we have today, Mr. O'Neill's service has really been steady, practical, and in the best interests of our students. I'm always struck, in particular, by how much care you put into the discussion of any issue that comes up with students of special needs in particular. I'm always struck by how you think you invoke your sister, who was a special needs teacher for a number of years, I believe in Cambridge, isn't that right? When thinking about, you know, how we best serve the students that are most in need in our district, and that always sticks with me, and I think it sticks with a lot of us. In any case, and as, as Mr. O'Neill said many times, the chair is a servant of the body, and again, we all owe a great debt of gratitude for you, for your service. And I'd also like to thank my fellow members for selecting me as the next servant of the body. Each of us, as you've heard today, brings a special set of skills and perspectives to the committee and to our city, and the rapport we've developed over time allows us to effectively serve this district to our best potential. And I told Dean Robinson earlier this week, I'm really glad that we're, we're getting the band back together, you know, it's still the eight of us that'll be here for another year, and I think that's really important, that we have continuity in this district, especially in a turbulent time and a time of change. We've done a great deal of good in this district, and we've adopted a number of leading policies. We've got a new code of conduct that's a model across the Commonwealth. We've got a nationally leading water policy. We've got a first-of-its-kind opportunity achievement gap task force, got task forces devoted to improving the lives of English language learners, of students in inclusion settings, and now, most recently, fiscal oversight for the district, and a school quality framework that makes enrollment more approachable for parents and students, and many more. We can be proud of this work while acknowledging that we are not done and we have much more to do. I can't think of a better group to work with than the one that's before us in seeking to improve the opportunities and lives of our BPS students, and I thank you again for your service and for the confidence that you've placed in me as chair. Thank you. Finally, and most importantly, I want to thank my family, who have given me the support necessary to do this job. I've got my three daughters here today and my parents, my wife Suzanne, who's en route, we've had a busy day.
She's here.
Is she here?
Yeah.
Hey, lady. Who is herself a former educator, my three daughters, Sophia, Francesca, and Maria, who are BPS students, they're the reasons that I do this job. They're the reasons that I do this job. You know, I want a Boston that's a better city for us. And that means building a better city for all of us. And that means providing for our friends and neighbors the same privileges that we enjoy. And I said something, you know, when I think about this, I said something that, you know, is very personal to me when this committee hired Dr. Chang. I said in the remarks when we did hire Dr. Chang that my kids are going to be fine. You know, it's true, my children are ahead of the game. We have two educated parents, we have a home, we have a warm bed, clean clothes, food on the table. The work we do here is to make sure that the kids in this city that do not have those basic human necessities are given the same opportunities to achieve to the best of their potential.
Right.
And that's how we make this city better, by creating the tools that children need to succeed. Education unlocks those tools, and that's the business that we're in. We learn these lessons every day, but for the most of us, it starts in the home. And so I want to also remark that I'm honored and overwhelmed to have my parents with me today, who traveled up from Florida to be here, and they're going to be here a little bit longer because their flight got canceled tomorrow.
You'll get out in March.
As I mentioned earlier, I have a few auxiliary shovels for tomorrow. But I also want to remark that it's my father's 77th birthday today.
Aww.
So I want to give him a round of applause.
What a birthday, Charlie.
Going a little off script, but I, you know, I'm a product of public schools. I grew up in Broward County, Florida. I went to Broward County Public Schools. My father's a product of public schools. He's Medford High, class of 1958. My mother's a, I won't say what year, of course. She's a product of the public schools in the Miami-Dade County Public School System in Florida, graduated from Southwest High School in Miami. And my wife as well, she's a graduate of Walpole High. This work means very much to us. And, you know, I don't know that I, stop calling me. I know it's going to snow tomorrow. I don't know that I can ever live up to the model of parenting, citizenship, and frankly, decency that my parents have shown my sister and me and our many friends and relatives over time. But I certainly want to thank them for the love they've given me and the guidance they've provided me. I love you, Mom and Dad, and thank you. It's tough speaking in public in front of your parents, if you haven't noticed. I want to close with, the times ahead for this district, as we all know, are very challenging. We continue to face shrinking state and federal revenues. Our English language learners population continues to grow, and in fact, students of Latinx origin are the largest population within our district today. Our children with special needs continue to deserve our care and attention. We'll have a teacher's contract and a transportation contract that's up this year, and we must address transformational changes to our school buildings and to our configurations across the district. We will face these challenges head-on, and we will do so together. To my colleagues, Dr. Chang, all the students, teachers, staffs, and staff and parents in our district, thank you. And I look forward to continuing to work together with all of you to make BPS a better place for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaCanto. Vice Chair Coleman, would you like to say anything?
I said it earlier. Oh, that's right. I think that still impressed my goal, you guys. Thank you for your respect and honor, and I look forward to working with you through the year and the years to come. So thank you.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. I will simply say, Mr. LaCanto and Dean Coleman, on behalf of your fellow members, we thank you both for your willingness to lead in the coming year. You know, we are not a bunch of politicians, right, that are all striving to get ahead and run for future office and that type of thing. We are individuals that are committed to these Boston Public Schools, and that's what we're doing. And these roles take a lot of time and energy. And folks see us up here publicly at the meetings, and yes, they can run very long, and yet that's a very small percent of what we all individually do. And all the members know when I've called them and said, "Dr. Uriarte, will you please step up on this ELL issue, or will you please help us on this?" Or, "Ms. Robinson, will you please help us, you know, on the early education work that we're doing?" Or, "Dean Robinson, will you please help us on inclusion, or will you take over the superintendent's review?" Or, "Ms. Oliver Davila, can you help us with these community issues, or can you help us with the students that are moving in from Puerto Rico?" We all do a number of things, and Mr. LaCanto and Dean Coleman equally do that as well. And I do want to particularly call out, because it is such a quiet role that he has served for several years now, but is absolutely critical. Mr. LaCanto has been the lead on our collective bargaining, working with the cities, with the district's labor team. And we have 17 collective bargaining agreements, I believe. Thirteen? Thank you. We have 13 collective bargaining agreements, and some small, some extremely substantial. And that is a huge time commitment to be able to do that and to work through those details and still come out of the day with strong working relationships with the folks on the other side of the table, because we are all committed to the students in our care. And so whether it's our teachers, or our school leaders, or our bus drivers, or our cafeteria workers, or our police officers who help keep us safe, thank you, or to the officers standing in the back of the room right now. These are all important issues, and Mr. LaCanto, you've done an excellent job on that, among the many other things that we've asked you to do. So thank you, Mr. LaCanto, and thank you, Dean Coleman, for your willingness to serve in a leadership role in the coming year, and we look forward to working with you both. And so thank you. And if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It looks like unanimous consent. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you back here for our full, for our first full meeting of the year on Wednesday, January 10th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, and have a good night.